So I will open the Deerfield School Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. 6:02 PM. And Conway will convene when they have their full forum. So once we. Phil, you're on, right? Or you feel you're somewhere?
I'm on here.
Elaine. Oh, Elaine's there.
Yeah.
You got. Elaine is now here. Can you, can we convene Conway?
No, we have too short.
So still only have two? Okay, so we'll have to wait and see when Jared or Michael or.
Denise.
Or Denise shows. Denise apparently won't be here, but Phil and Elaine are here. Sorry. So we've been looking for Michael or Jared. Is Jared there?
Jared just came out.
Okay, so you can. You can call, call to order Elaine?
Sure, I'd call Conway's meeting to order at 6:04 PM.
Okay. We're on a roll. Thank you all. Public comment? I didn't see any, did.
You guys know you both, you know, in here.
Okay, and I don't, I didn't get contacted to say that there was any, I didn't get anything in writing saying there was anything, so. Let me just double check to make sure. I'm sorry, folks, I just have gotten into town, so that's why I'm not there this evening. I do not see. Any public comment, so. There would be no public comment for this meeting. All right. We're under new business then. Romney Associates' presentation. Update us on anti-racism and equity work. So please, I will turn it over to Darius to introduce Romney Associates.
Thank you. As everyone knows, I'm going to try to speak really loud so the mic picks me up well. As everyone knows, that we started our work with Romney Associates, I think it was October, November. And invite them here this evening to give us an overview of where we brought us and such. I'd like to introduce the three members from Romney Associates. We have Pat Romney, who's there. And. You'll make it so they can show up on screen to you too. And we have Paul Wiley, we can see right there. And we have Jen Cannon as well. So they're going to give a little presentation. So I hear, Paul, are you leading off?
I am not, actually. Dr. Romney's leading off.
Oh.
Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Darius. We're very glad to be with you tonight, just to have a few minutes to share a bit about our work. We started working with Frontier Regional in October of this academic year, and we came by via a referral from Amherst Regional School Superintendent Michael Morris, with whom we worked for many years. And Darius has gracefully introduced our team, Paul Wiley, Jen Cannon, and myself. And we're just going to take a few minutes to tell you what we've been up to in the last few months. I'll turn it over to Paul.
So, thank you all, and thank you, Chairman Cuddleback, for allowing us some time on the agenda to make this brief presentation. We will touch on some very important things, but just ahead of our brief presentation, I'd like for you to know that we have been very involved with, over the last seven months, with the school system. And they have been very receptive and eager to do the work. And the community is excited about the work. And we are happy to be here, so we want to thank you all for the opportunity to talk a little bit about that. So from our end, Romney Associates provides consultation, guidance, and facilitation, support to the Frontier Regional Union 38th School District. We do this through regular meetings with the full Anti-Racism and Equity Committee. We have regular meetings with our three subcommittees comprised of a School Culture Committee, which is headed by Dr. Pat Romney. The Professional Development and Curriculum Committee, headed by Jen Cannon. And the Policy Committee, headed by me. You'll hear more about this, this part in a moment. We also provide additional support through interim work sessions with the three committees, along with planning meetings with Darius Modesto and Sarah Mitchell. And from the beginning, we have extended our support to committee members to be, by encouraging and accepting email and phone communications as needed in order to keep the process moving forward. So far, the energy in the district has been very good around this, and we're making progress. And you'll hear a little bit more about what we're doing with the, the overall Anti-Racism and Equity Committee and the sessions that we're holding from them, from Jen Cannon, who will give you a summary of what we're doing with the entire committee. Followed by, we will talk a little bit, very little bit, about our work with the the individual subcommittee, so you get a flavor of that. So Jen, maybe you want to just jump right in and talk about the full committee work?
Sure, thank you, Paul. Before I start, I just want to say what a pleasure it's been to work with your team. And especially with the very dedicated teachers and administrators that I've had the pleasure of getting to know through the PD and Curriculum Committee. And the commitment to anti-racism and equity is so clear. The dedication and eagerness to not only get going on the work, but to expand it and sustain it. So I just want to commend all the great effort in this direction. So I'll just give you a very brief overview of what we've been up to. Our first A and E Anti-Racism and Equity Committee meeting on October 28. And that was really an introduction to our team, to our principles of practice. We established community agreements and guidelines for our entire community. We did that collectively. And then Dr. Romney went over our foundational framework, which really ultimately is about moving beyond the duality of us and them. And really thinking about building community between the greater, the larger communities that our schools serve. All of our teachers, all of our students, and all of our families. So really looking at the common good and what will serve everybody in this work. So that was our opening framework. And then we met again in December, December 1. And the focus of that was shared language and vision. And we believe it's really critical to have common definitions and language as we're doing anti-racism and equity work. So that everybody's on the same page and can be coordinated and supporting each other. So we spent quite a bit of time just going over some definitions and making sure that we have common understanding about racism, anti-racism, equity, and culturally responsive education. And in our February meeting, we did a 45-minute presentation, really teasing apart the differences between critical race theory and culturally responsive education, and really wanting to to make sure that everyone's aware of the differences and that we can be clear as a community of teachers, administrators, and students, what we're doing in terms of culturally responsive education and how we're aligned with the Massachusetts DESI frameworks. So that was, we really went into quite deep, some detail there. And then our last meeting in March, we presented a very useful continuum on becoming an anti-racist and multicultural organization that was developed by Dr. Bailey Jackson and Dr. Rita Hardiman. And we really, I think you all have it. Is that correct? Did you all receive it for tonight's meeting? And anybody let me know if you have it in front of you? Not yet. Okay, so we'll, we'll make sure that everyone on the committee gets it. It's, it's a very useful continuum, and we broke out into discussion groups afterwards. And most, most folks came to agreement that we were moving along the continuum in a steady pace and somewhere between a three and four out of a six-part scale. So it's, it's hard to explain it if you don't have it right in front of you, but we can, we can circle back to it in another meeting. And then we have our last meeting coming up later this month in April. And we will be summarizing the work that we've done this year and planting seeds for next year. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
So Jen, and everyone, I think we'd like to just say a little bit, a sentence or two about each of our subcommittees. And I'll start by saying that I have been working with Erica Higgins Ross and Kelsey Crop, who have co-chaired the School Culture Committee. And the committee as a whole has been working on developing some social action norm statements for each of the schools. We're trying to, we will finalize these in the next month or two. We're trying to get some very simple statements that students at the various schools can buy into. So I'll give you a couple of examples. Coming from the high school, a suggestion was that there be a statement like, "We honor diversity through accepting everyone's different languages, foods, culture, religious practices, identities, et cetera." Or at the elementary school level, some folks have advanced the idea, saying very simply, "At our school, we include everyone." So that's mostly what our work has done this past year, is developing those social norm action statements. And I do want to mention the excellent work that Erica Higgins Ross, who's a parent, has begun to do with the captains of the sports teams in order to also help develop positive culture and anti-racist practices in the sports teams. And I'll turn it back over to Jen. To talk a little bit about PD and curriculum.
Sure, so I've been working with Holly Johnson and Amanda Moseya as the co-chairs. They've been just wonderfully organized, and it's, it's been a pleasure to work with both of them. Primarily, we've been a coordinating body, sharing information, as you can imagine, some teachers and administrators across the district. So it's both been our challenge and our strength, sharing information and coordinating with each other. Our other focus has been looking at professional development and really inviting teacher input for this current year. Teacher suggestions were taken into account, and Sarah was very responsive and planning for next year for professional development for teachers. We've also done a bit of work around shared language, developing common language across the schools and developing definitions that all teachers can feel that they can get behind. So that's primarily where we've been. And over to you, Paul.
So thank you. And the committee I, I lead is the Policy Committee. And I have, working with me, two subchairs, I assume co, two co-chairs, excuse me, not subchairs, co-chairs, Lou Vincent and Karen Ferrandino, and I have to say immediately, before I say anything else, how hard they are working to, to bring to light the kinds of work that needs to be brought forward in this district to get the work done around anti-racism and equity. Our main thing has been to work on policy. And what policy means, and we're growing to a point where we understand that policy is not just a set of rules, but policy is actually a way of embedding benefits into the school district. And, you know, some of the benefits of school, of this, in this school district will be coming out of the work we're doing on anti-racism and equity. And we've developed a statement which is about ready to be reviewed by our whole committee, which provides an umbrella statement about what the school district believes and what its intentions are with respect to what it's going to do. Not only what it believes, but how do these beliefs drive intentions? And there are definitions about racism and anti-racism, equity and educational equity. I mean, working hard to perfect those in a way that when we present them to folks to approve as policy documents, that we can see clearly the direction we're, we're going in, and we can, you know, receive guidance from them on the way, you know, on the way forward. In addition to that, I want to say that there are policies already in place, as you know, with the school district, and those policies are fine. They are clear, and they are well-written, and many of them are statute-related, as we know. But there are ways to embed the language of anti-racism and equity in those policies to bring them alive and to have them be more coherent and understandable and accessible to not only the teachers and the students, but also to the broader Frontier Regional School District community. I'm very happy with the work that they're doing. And I want to say, maybe in, in summary a bit, like, this is a process. This is not something that we arrive at suddenly at the end of the school year, kind of thing. This is something that is, each year, we're building on the next layer of what the work is that we have to do. So I remember I mentioned in a comment to our committee, I, I think Frontier Regional School Union 38 is on the verge of success in this area. And I believe that this could be an example for some things that need to happen in Western Massachusetts. So this is an opportunity that I think that's being embraced, everybody. And, you know, the hard work still lies ahead, but I, I think we're, we're doing a good job. For the school committee, we've received tremendous support from the school superintendent, from Sarah Mitchell, certainly, who we meet with on, on a regular basis. And I think we're, we're moving this forward in a way that I think the district will be proud of. So that's what we have to offer tonight. Darius, did we get, did we do our seven minutes?
I think you did. Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
I just want to kind of wrap, because it's exactly what Paul said there at the end. It's been great to have Romney Associates come to us and be an outside lens about that next layer. Like, we can take a layer off each, or multiple layers off each year. Being outside lens, they also, you know, a lot, you get a full working group, you know, talk with them, not just run everything off the current administration. That's really helped. We are, we are going to continue our relationship with them next year. We can continue our work there. We already had, we had a planning meeting last week with them here. They came up to visit us. And so we're starting that as well, so. It's kind of, and I do, we'd like to open up the school community if they have questions to them as well. But I want to say thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the work you've been doing for us.
Thank you, Paul.
And I will echo, echo those thanks for all your hard work and all of the hard work of everyone serving on all the various subcommittees as well. Do we have anyone from the committees or any people that are working with Romney Associates that want to speak? So raise your hand, or. I've got limited numbers of people on here, but we should be able to figure this out. Does anyone have any comments or thoughts?
Looks like we're good out here, Ken.
Okay, and it looks, I think it's good here. I'm not seeing anything. Okay, well, thank you very, again, thank you very much for being here this evening and providing the update. We're, I think we're all excited to continue to see the work in progress and glad to hear that progress is being made. Thank you again. So. So. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the joint agenda is Professional Development Plan with Sarah Mitchell. Is Sarah with us?
I am here. I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out where to stand. So I guess you'll all see this anyway, so I'll stand for, I'll stand for this audience.
Stand for the people in attendance, yes. And it, I, I did not start off by saying how wonderful it is to see an in-person meeting taking place and to see people gathered around a table finally. I apologize again for not being there. I just have come in from travels and landed in Deerfield late this afternoon, so, thank you. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. Get the next slide? Yeah, if I tap, it'll work? No, okay. I got my answer. No tapping. So despite the fact that we are still in pandemic mode, we did an incredible amount of professional development this year, in both the elementary and the secondary level. So I want to take you through a little bit of history of what we did this year, and then project off till next year. I just sent out some surveys to teachers in the last couple of days. And I usually get your overwhelming response in the first couple of days, and that's been true. Teachers have really stepped up and given us some feedback on both what was happening this year and planning for next year. So at the elementary level, as Romney Associates mentioned, we did some work around culturally responsive teaching and learning. We had the pleasure of having Goldie Muhammad speak to us a couple of times. And for those of you who know her work, she is on the forefront of providing curriculum guidance to people that are trying to develop lessons and units. We also, at the elementary level, did some specific unit development and really got into specific lesson development, using that framework to guide, to guide those topics. As many of you know, mental health is on the rise. We did several workshops with Bright, and they are an institution that works out of Brooklyn. We actually have a local person that works out of Western Massachusetts, and she was able to provide ongoing professional development about what's happening with mental health with youth and adults. Talking to teachers also, if you may, when a few, there was a feedback. There was also some school-based, specific professional development. So school-based professional development in each elementary school, the way that they have them model, they have, we have district days, we have school-based days, and then we have a teacher proposal, a teacher development day. So for the school-based days, some of the buildings worked on calibrating student writing samples, increasing student discourse through peer feedback, the impact of poverty on teaching, and then social-emotional learning. So they each had different pieces, and at some of the admin meetings, we were able to talk about some of the work that they're doing in each of the schools. Are you able to answer this slide?
Yes, if you don't, you can run this slide.
Next slide, please. Sorry. At the secondary level, it's a similar lineup. We also had, watched Goldie Muhammad. She did a presentation for us one evening. We had to actually do it at night because her schedule is so jam-packed, but we had incredible attendance. We also worked on curriculum development and integrating all of the pieces that we've been working on with professional development. And this looks like a very scattered list, but this is the professional development that we've worked on at Frontier for the last eight to 10 years. We have had a lot of new faculty and a lot of turnover in that time through retirements. And so this was a bit of a catch-up year. We get everyone on the same page with some of the philosophies and some of the PD beliefs and curriculum beliefs that we've had over the last eight years. And we get everyone kind of at the same, on the same starting page. We also had the Brain Workshops. We've adopted a new special ed delivery model at the high school. We were trying to mimic that middle school model that's been working so well for us for years, and it's, it's going very well. So we have a special educator that's assigned to each grade level now. And rather than having special educators spending all of their time doing skills development in special class, in separate classes, we have that PACE block or that C block, and that's when all the skills work happens. So that our special educators at the high school can push into classrooms and make a much more inclusive environment. So we're really pleased with the way that's going. We also did writing across the curriculum. Historically, we've done the John Collins writing across the curriculum. This year, we brought in the Western Mass Writing Project, and they did some similar workshops in helping to integrate writing in all the core content areas, actually, all contact areas, not even just core across the curriculum. We're also looking forward to, actually, next Friday, we're going to do a restorative justice workshop. And it's really about helping students to self-regulate and teaching them, having them pay back for errors they may have made behaviorally to the community, rather than just a straight discipline approach. So that will be the first workshop that we're going to do with middle school next Friday. So looking at next year, we're going to continue some of our themes. We'll continue with culturally responsive education. We're also looking at, and I'll give a little more detail on the next two, on the next couple of slides, creating level your classrooms, K through 8. Any of you who are in schools these days know that our students are behind a year or two. And it's not just behind academically, because academics, we've been catching up pretty well on, but it's really about who they are as human beings. They lost a year or two of development. And it's just now that we're starting to see things level out with students. So we're really interested in doing something to help make that come along. We're going to do some examining student work through PLCs, and then we'll do continued curriculum revision and development. So just a little bit about professional learning communities, and that, it's a real buzzword these days. People use the word PLC for everything from a bunch of teachers getting together and talking to the actual decor, definition of getting together and doing data analysis. So we're going to work the solution tree to work closer towards the data analysis and really analyzing student work, calibrating student work samples. It's been a few years since we've had the opportunity to do that, and we want to get back to the pre-pandemic track we were on with assessment. So we'll go ahead and switch to the next one. So PLCs ask four questions. What do we want all students to know, understand, and be able to do? So what's the objective? How would we know if they learn it? That's our assessment. How would we respond when some students don't learn it? Our RTI and our IEP process. And how would we extend learning for students who are already proficient? So how are we going to stretch those learners that are already there? We're also looking at responsive classroom. I just had a conversation today, so it's very much in its infancy. But we're looking at bringing in some of the responsive classroom strategies that we had in the past. Sunderland Elementary School, though it's probably been 12 years now or something, since we had all of the faculty trained on responsive classroom. And so we're exploring what that will look like, not through the, not just the elementary, but also looking at middle school. You could really use some classroom strategies and some norms and some routines to help our kids get back on track developmentally. This kind of tags on to what the Romney Associates were talking about. We're in the process of examining, you know, we're looking at cost, but we're looking at doing an equity audit in our district. And an equity audit would bring another outside lens into the district and would basically leave us with a to-do list to help us guide this work as we continue forward. So we would have them look at policy, do a real analysis. The Romney Associates has already done a little bit of that for us. It follows along by developing some processes, some policies, which is great. They would look at curriculum to see what our resources are primarily, and are they culturally responsive? We do artifact analysis, which is essentially looking at student assignments and see what we're asking students to do. That would cover more than just equity. It would cover rigor. It would cover relevance and all those different components. And also data analysis to look at our AP courses, to look at our special ed numbers. Do we see disproportionate agenda, race, ethnicity, SES? And then in addition, they would come onsite and do classroom observations to get a feel. And then to finish up, this is a quick summer program. We're, we're going to be mimicking what we had for summer last year. So we'll have early childhood programs. We'll have elementary programs that will be happening in three of our buildings, Deerfield, Sunderland, and Conway. Waitley students, again, we'll go over to Deerfield, just kind of an economy of scale piece. We'll continue to do our Jump Start Program here at the middle school for a We'll continue to do our jumpstart program here at the middle school for students that are entering grades seven, eight, and nine. And then, as our funding is really helping us out because we'll be able to run that credit recovery program again. I will say anecdotally that the numbers for summer school for credit recovery are much lower this year than they were last year and that makes me very happy that, you know, fewer students are falling into that situation where they have to have to make up courses. We'll also support our students that feel Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
I gotta throw another thank you out to Sarah. As you guys all remember, we've had this before, it's usually the team, elementary coordinator and Sarah's gonna get, Sarah's really had to pick up and the principals picking up the lion's share of that position. So I just want to say thank you publicly and thank the principals who also, we had to divide up a lot of the work and it's on the principals who, as we know, are already I say close to their backs. They're all probably texting each other now. But I just want to say thank you.
I just wanted to add that Bright is out of Brookline Mass, not out of Brooklyn.
Thank you, Elaine.
Yep. And we, we use it extensively or involved with it extensively in the Holyoke School District.
There's a lot there. Can you go back to me, the third slide? I was wondering about the change in special education. Liberty, like how are we measuring improvements?
Yeah, that's, it's a really, really good question. Oh, are you talking about?
Using the PACE block and assigning one person to each grade level?
So practically speaking, it's working very well. Neither speaking, I don't have data yet. Really are just, technically, we started it last year, but because it was the pandemic and we were remote, there was just no being able to measure it. So this is our first year. And you bring up a really, a really good point. So as we're starting to look at data kind of across the board, that will be one thing that we're going to have to look at. So we know, we know from the, you know, the field anecdotal point of view that it's working better for teachers, it's working better for students because they have another instructor that's able to push into the class and we're doing some collaborative teaching models. And that's what a lot of the training was around with the collaborative teaching approach. And how do you do that on the fly quickly? Because we know there's not enough time to plan all of that. So anecdotally, it's working, but you're right, we need to follow up with, so are we seeing fewer referrals? Because we've got students that are in classes that are supported by a second educator. Are we seeing increase in performance with students that are on IEP? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing nothing else, we can move on in the agenda to the proposed school calendars.
digitally, to those who are in the room and made copies, this is paper. I haven't seen that. So the blue is Frontier. The red is 38. Should have been on the same sheet, but they're basically the same, but just in different terminology when it comes to parent conferences. But I'll do the quick overview. We're looking at starting school on the 30th of August. I've already talked with both associations. I mean, they ordered for us to go before the last day, last Wednesday and August, we have to have an agreement with the association to do so. And we've agreed to start the school. Bring teachers back on Monday. Students back on Tuesday. With the Friday, again, that long, maybe they need it. And we had to go behind that, I know, and we kind of talked about ideas to have a short week, especially when you talk about the younger students, K-1, 2. It's a long week, you can get four or five days, then folding it together, especially some of them coming to school for the first time and that kind of thing. Then we go to a 40-week, the following week, and then a five-day. So it's kind of a transition. I think the teachers really, when I presented it to them, they asked for that as well, so that's the start of the school year, just to kind of explain it. We have the early leases as usual put into the calendar and have date for parent conferences at the elementary land. We really do have to keep our schedules locked, secondary, or childcare, those kind of things. So on the days where there's parent conferences and professional development at the secondary. So you can see that there. And the rest, I think, is kind of self-explanatory from town year to town year, so any questions you have, I'm here there. A lot of the very similar patterns we've done past year.
Darius, I have a quick question. What were you saying about, it seems like we started a week later than August, but it has to do with that Wednesday?
So yeah, according to contract, you can't start, you can't start without approval from the association before the last Wednesday in August. And the last Wednesday in August has to be the last day of August. So normally you could, on a different year, almost get a full weekend that day. And if it goes into the, you know, into the previous week, you know, I had discussions with them. This is kind of really tough. You bring new teachers back on a Friday prior, so we talked a little bit about that as well. Positive and negative, the positive part is they get to relax a little bit after getting their introduction to school or get to get in their classrooms over the weekend if they, you too, they have that kind of thing.
Just have a question about the end, the ending of the school year. Because I thought that we did not in the budget allocate funds to pay salaries for junior students.
For support staff, IAs, and administrators. That's added as a holiday. And that, it's all Fridays or only if you didn't have the fees. Support staff and administrators will get it.
But if they have costs, does that cost?
Teachers will not, they'll just have an extra day off. They don't get paid for holidays on the tuition contract.
So Bill is correct, though, if we have four new days next year, those trigger June 2nd. It's like 5,000 or 8,000 across the whole district.
So we have to vote on this, so we'll start. Hey Ken, you want me to start off with Frontier?
Why don't you start with Frontier and get the Frontier calendar?
All right.
Taken care of.
I'll take, I'll take a motion to accept the calendar for Frontier. Olivia, Bill? We'll do a roll call.
Bob?
Yes.
Damian?
Uh, yes.
Mary? Pete?
Yes.
Missy?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Lynn?
Are you going to do individuals at the, at the elementary?
Yes, we have to do each individual. That's why we convened each, each committee, so I don't know if Judy wants to call the roles or?
First, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion from Waitley.
I'll make a motion for Sunderland.
I'm sorry, guys, I don't have anything to say.
Maureen.
Oh, Maureen, well, I'm Maureen. I'm sorry, I don't know, Olivia, between you and the screen. Carrie? Carrie?
Here. It's easier when your name's underneath you on the screen.
Okay, so I have Bob and then
Maureen.
Okay, I have Greg and Miss Second. Peter.
I'll make a motion for Conway.
Conway goes first. Elaine?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay. Michael is absent, Lisa's absent, and Phil. Deerfield. Ken?
Yes.
Mary? Carrie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Sunderland, Greg?
You missed Erica.
Yep. Yep, I'm here and yes, I can barely hear you out there, but yes, I hear, I'm a yes.
Thanks, Erica. I didn't see you because I'm not screening. Sunderland, Greg? Jessica? Megan?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Ken.
Did we get more? You got Waitley, I didn't.
Waitley, that was not an intentional flight, I got distracted by my own stuff. Maureen? Bob?
Yep.
Beth, Bethany, sorry. All right.
I think that got them all. Didn't mean to question. As Erica said, it's, it's not the greatest volume here in my headphones, so so the next item of business would be the proposed school committee meeting schedules.
So like I said, as we are voting, and for those of you at home, you can click on your digital one. The major changes is that I felt like the October joint meeting was not as successful as we've had in the past. And so I'm proposing that we go to normal meetings that month. We'll also, elementary level, have a new curriculum directive. So if you have a person to be able to come out, each, each person, each committee to give, you know, presentations to each one there as well. I do want to keep in December, right now, no scheduled regular meetings, I thought that worked this year. I think we felt like we were missing anything from there. And then continue to join me in April. I changed the start time to five because the hour and a half is getting tight. You're going to meet in person, that's game plan, that's makes it me running out very, you know, speeding across town. But I also, that's, I need to hear from Eric and you folks that it's going to be too early. We started doing that anyway. I think in some cases, we try to rotate, but that's the summary there, you can kind of look at it and see if it fits.
But I agree that the joint meetings don't really work as well as the individual meetings. But the reason we went to joint meetings was to make the professional vibe of our administrators just a tiny, tiny little bit easier. And I thought it was a decent trade-off to have a better chance of keeping you all around and trading a little bit of meeting efficacy for that purpose, because the whole reason we started it.
I hear you. And I agree. At the same time, you know, we've had to do a lot of joint meetings just because we kept them in all of those ages, so sometimes they're more hectic than the individual meeting. I hear you at the same time as well. You know, Shelley and I also talked about other major changes, we're not doing a tricky day. That was just too much on us. So we asked Waitley to go on a different day, but still stay early because they're smaller break. Saying we know their schedules, but they, they get okay with a four o'clock meeting. So that does help us out, that's really made a help for us, that helps.
Ken?
Yes.
You want me to go first, Frontier, for the, the schedule?
Absolutely. Work.
Motion for Frontier to accept the school committee's schedule? Missy? Olivia?
God, I'm gonna vote on. Bob?
Yes.
Damian?
Yes.
Mary? Pete?
Yes.
Missy?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Lynn? Since I swiped them, I'll do Waitley next. Can I get a motion?
I'll second it.
Maureen? And Bob?
Yes.
Beth?
Yeah.
Deerfield? Can I get a motion?
Second it.
Ken?
Yes.
Mary? Carrie?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Conway, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Elaine?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Michael?
Not there.
Phil?
Yes.
And Sunderland? Greg?
Yes.
Pete? Jessica?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yes.
And Megan?
Yes.
So that is, that is all of us. Okay. Thank you, Judy. So we, on to the next item is the first read of the MSC Policy Update, Section D, Fiscal Management Goals.
So as part of the package, we got it for the summary page from MSC on there. I'll send it out to you, but basically just quickly read through it. But basically, these are fiscal policies, the changes, shows down through all of them, I've gone through all of them. They're basically clarifying language, there's no real substance of change. They're also adding, whenever you see the, they're adding to the regional districts, maybe you see a dash one, that's for regional agreement to be applied to the policy. So basically, you know, MSC, you know, sent these out to us. We adjusted them slightly to make sure they fit our inter-union or, or region, that kind of stuff. But basically ensuring that all the languages align with constitutional and legal principles of school funding, confirming that the policy remains focused on the legal authorities in the school committee, updating the legal references, clarifying the process, to remember places in prior language that made them let the process of school committee work unclear. This update tries to make the process easier to follow. Incorporating best practices, fiscal best practices from across the state have long been part of MSC professional development for members. And then clarifying regional policy distinctions. I think that's where those were the ones we're adding because we didn't have a regional language when it comes to these. So these are fiscal policies that were governed by. They're kind of dense reading, if you ever read through them. If you forget, let's just say. And so anyways, so it's a first read, so you're getting them tonight. If you have questions and such, between now and the next meeting, we should have to show you or not. Try to answer that, or bring it to the next meeting, but listen when they ask me. I'm down to something we didn't, we didn't answer.
Okay.
There are more coming, by the way. And some I'm putting a little hold on to because they're connected to our anti-racial equity work. And so I want to make sure that we have some of that language get brought into and tweak some of the language there and so tweak and tweak again apply that from the materials coming out of the policies.
Excuse me, Darius, do we have to bring the group together again? Are we going to have a bunch of policies coming up where the policy committee?
There's, there's probably about four more, okay? And so, no.
Okay.
You know, no, but there's another, another group thing to talk about, so.
Okay.
The problem is, so you guys have a policy The problem is, so you guys have a policy subcommittee, you know, I know you know that, but to get the policy subcommittee together to go over something that's kind of vetted by MSC, it's up to you, if you want to do it, we can do it, but a lot of them are kind of plug and play, you know, so. And then, you know, there's ones that change, they're more particular to our district, you know, who we change to our district, that'd be something we look at, so. And so that's kind of, that's kind of how things are, your policy subcommittee wants to meet with this next group. It may have to, because we may want to do some changes to it. But we'll get a little bit closer. These are so dry, they're just financial.
Okay.
Darius, I have a question. Some of them changed regionals, regional district school committee to just school committee. Some of us don't have that. I don't know.
If they have a dash one, it's referring to the regional school committees, and there's a little bit, a little bit different language, slightly different about that, and then it's not the dash one, that's just the regular school.
So what is the definition of regional?
That's Frontier. Your regional, your regional agreement.
You're up, Ken.
So, that's it, okay. Renewal of service contract with DuPere law offices?
So.
First read. And I would imagine that that policy would be discussed at individual school committee meetings next month?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay.
So you'll be able to, it'll be a smaller group, you can ask more intimate questions about legal policy.
Right.
Financial policy.
Fiscal policy.
Fiscal policy, there you go. So you guys do have a a contract with, it's a great law offices, and it's been every two years we renew it, and it's due. So they just finished our negotiation, those are negotiations, so Russ first came and his work. And so. Looking to re-patch that contract so that we can have it for the next year.
So are you looking for a vote, or are you looking for, what do you?
You're voting to renew a contract, yes.
Okay, because it didn't have vote next to it, but I assumed we were voting.
We'll start off with Frontier. For motion in a second, please.
Bob?
Yes.
Damian?
Yep.
Mary? And Eve?
Yes.
Missy?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Judy S. Phil?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Lynn?
What, question, you have a, another one, or do we only assign this one?
Okay.
Conway, can we get a motion?
Was that Conway?
That was Conway.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
I second.
I didn't even make note of that, Jessica's asking a question about whether or not this is the joint committee versus the individual committees?
Because we, and I'm going to talk about this in a second, because we open as individual committees, I would ask each individual committee voter, because
Right.
they're representing your district, which is a good link.
Okay, so I missed the motion. Conway, can you repeat?
I made a motion, and Jared seconded.
Okay, Elaine?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
And Phil? Deerfield, can I get a motion?
Second.
Ken?
Yes.
Mary? Gary?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Sunderland, can I get a motion? Second. Greg?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yes.
Megan? One second.
Did you say yes, Megan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
That was everybody? Yes, okay. We, we have one more item on the open agenda, and then I think we would move to, towards executive session and adjournment of the Frontier Regional, but we have a, a topic here that Darius has brought up over the past couple of years. While we have a Union 38 structure, we don't technically have a written agreement that identifies all of the bits and pieces that we need to conduct business, so. Darius, did you want to talk about this? I mean, we, we need to direct, work towards drafting a formal Union 38 agreement.
Correct, so we, we've gotten together as Union 38 to make decisions. And one good question, we don't have an agreement that says how we do that. Right now, if you go back to the hiring of, go back to the hiring of superintendent, right now, there's no way to work out legally if there's disagreements between different members of the union or the regions part in that. And so we created a simple work through, but the actual, it never existed until it came out. This goes back to, I know Marty Garrett was looking for it, and she first started, she visited town offices, trying to find this agreement, and so the question is whether or not it ever existed. Where's Bob Decker? Please call in Bob, you know, so, you have a copy of his desk. But, so what I wanted to do is, I was thinking of creating a subcommittee to work on this, because it's going to give you the outline, and we can look at, I do have some examples already from other districts, there's seven districts that are set up like us in the state, about how to work through the processes of hiring, how to work through the process of, some of the stuff that we already have set, but we've been writing. How do you, where is it in writing that says how the central office building, you know, those kind of things we run on, we've been running on how we've always done things in the past, but it'd be nice to get things in writing, because when it's a problem, then it's going to be a problem.
Right.
People are fighting over whether or not, I'll use myself, it's easiest to do, you're fighting over whether or not to renew a contract. How do you, how do you, you know, how do you work that out, you know? Kind of like discussing. That kind of stuff, and so it's better to work it out now while you're not discussing something that's. Yeah, Billy shaking your head.
Well, you know, if, if this was a discussion to amend or alter the regional agreement, all four towns would have to vote yes at town meeting.
So this will have to be voted, I believe, so this, this group would look at what needs to be included in this. What's the legality of, right now, I look at the legality, that's why I wanted each of you to vote your things. Right now, recently it came out, one person, one vote. And you have different weights of town and population, so you have to make sure that they're legally set when you start doing those kind of votes. That's why, again, that's why it's made, we just make sure everybody votes, if everybody votes we're okay. But if you start getting weekly three votes, Deerfield three votes, Deerfield could say, I don't have the same weight on the choosing of the population. So there's all these different things that legally you can do within that, but I want to, this group would look at that.
One person, one vote applies to spending. This would be, this would be setting up an organizational structure in which we can spend, so I.
I don't know, I don't.
This, this, or this should be, all four towns have equal weight.
Okay.
And, well, for a new agreement, yes. And I, and I look back at how the towns went about agreeing in 1954. Here it is. And it was the chair of the local school committee, the chair of the select board, and the chair of the finance committee, all three towns that do the negotiating. And that, it, it has to go to town leading, and it's only school committee that you, you, you love.
Well, I think we have to, I think you have to look at what it, what it takes, I've seen other agreements for unions, and they have kind of a structured place and how to do that. You might be right for the financial, I mean, if you want in that area, again, that's, part of the work will be to discover the different areas that we should have coverage on, but we, I mean, this committee does have, we're fortunate that you guys do agree well. But we watched some of our neighboring districts having trouble there, and I was, if this is a group that doesn't want to work together, then I don't know how you're going to solve some of the issues.
Phil, we're not talking about setting up a region, right, we, we have an agreement already that there's a regional setup of the four elects. We're just trying to basically give it some bylaws, sort of, an agreement on how it goes from proper.
It's a su, like we'd be setting up our superintendent to union.
Yes. So we're not looking at the Frontier agreement, we're looking at the union agreement, which doesn't exist on paper.
Well, we don't, but at, at some point we assume it existed, and as you're looking at, there was a vote made by the towns to join into this union, that's all, it's just not the branch here between the towns board and decided to, and whether something was lost or never really put together. I guess I wasn't sure, Phil, what you were talking about, raising some objection about having finance committee, everybody involved.
I.
We're already a, a union. Of the four elects.
I, if I, if I could. If I could just say that I think the intent Darius has, and, and in the back of, not in the back of my mind, but the intent that I had was that if we form a subcommittee to investigate this, then we can answer some of these very questions you're talking about. You know, we, you, you're not going to resolve it this evening, but I think we need to try and establish a subcommittee and see if we've got some people that would be willing to serve, and put together, working in consultation with council, a, a document and an agreement that we can, either if it needs to be brought to town meeting votes, then we would bring it to town meeting votes, if it's something that can be voted on at the school committee levels, we would do it that way. But we need to, we need to do the legwork first before we can really, you know, have the legal, I'll, I'll let the two lawyers sitting on opposite sides of the table there continue to, to talk, but I think, you know, that was Darius' thought and my thought is to try and get this done and, you know, have the assistance of council in pulling together an agreement that formalizes much of what I've done for the 30 years that I've been doing this with the school committees, so. And, and I think that's, you know, the step that needs to be taken, so.
Yeah, do you disagree, Phil, with trying to come up with something other than 1954?
I think anytime you open something like this up, it, it is like a constitutional convention. And you don't know what is going to be coming down the fight, and that's why, to me, I'm very nervous about the tyranny of the majority. And, and, and that, you know, with 17% of student population, if that's how it's going to go down, I get really more nervous than I would be otherwise. That, that, that when, that when we formed as a regional, even though at that time Deerfield was 54%, we, we were all equal share at that time, to, to, we all had an equal weight as towns when we come into this agreement, and I think we should have equal weight as towns. Whatever, settings, putting this decision, these decisions off to a subcommittee, this means you'll get the subcommittee's answers, but it is up to us to decide how you want to enter, what you want it to look like. It could be saying, make a subcommittee and let them decide, but.
Well, I.
Maybe we'll just be finding information.
Yeah. Subcommittee to start working on this, because we've been talking about it for years. The subcommittee doesn't decide anything, they're just going to hopefully do a lot of legwork and bring proposals forward on how, how we should go.
And, and, I think we all agree that would have to be adopted by town meetings.
No, I will find out.
Depends on, I mean, you may find some lost document, right, so there may be something that's already been adopted by all the towns. Right, and in theory, that would be what the subcommittee would bring back and say, this is what we discovered, right?
A lot of efforts to find it, but you're right.
I mean, right, I mean, I just, before we start bringing things back to them, we find out that something's already, is wrong.
Yeah, I agree with though, there's something that's nervous about the fact that you start to question how you've done stuff in the past. At the same time, I see you're on the railroad tracks, eventually you're going to run out of track, eventually you're going to get into a conflict with a superintendent, and you don't have the ability without almost an absolute vote to remove, you don't have the legal, you don't have the legality on your side. I'm saying, I'm saying it's superintendent, you have many other things you're seeing, it's very easy, you're looking at just the superintendent as one of your roles. You know, but if you have split decisions amongst the different towns, and that happens, and it's happened in other superintendencies around us, for certain towns that wanted the superintendent to move on, or certain towns were, were leaning towards, and you just don't have that, and so I think it's best to look at it, you know, when you have a stable, you have a stable committee right now, you have a stable superintendent. Now is the time to look, I would say it's time to look at it, I agree though, but there is something nervous about it, because someone can say, well, let's look at this, and let's look at this, and it can kind of blow things up, but.
It doesn't sound nervous about going forward without any priors.
I mean, it just, I remember I remember how you had to do the vote for superintendent, it was made, and you could all vote for this. And that's, you know, those disagreements on the superintendent, and going back, you know, several superintendencies as well. You know, if the statement was made, make sure this is clean, debating it out, you know, votes and possible, you know, table votes, like your straw votes on certain things, and again, they'd say, well, we have to vote. You know, we need to have, you know, we need to have a.
You know the vote we're talking about this year, because it was either all of us, or we were going to have prob, not problems, but.
And it just. That's what I'm trying to solve, if you don't want to solve it, then you can just say no, Darius, but I think that's the.
So, I, I need to say that a proposal to amend our current working relationship. Which would, that's what it would be, like amending, right now it's all unwritten and practice and custom. But a proposal to amend our practices and custom our working relationship. If, if you're entertaining doing that in some facet, that does not require town meeting or football, I would generally.
But we don't know yet.
It's up to us to simply, you can just say that that's what it's going to be.
But I think the value comes from having the, the subcommittee research and come forward with a structure that hopefully, you know, defines what we've worked under in terms of, you know, past practice and, and assumed legality, so, you know, I'd like to get it down on paper and have it be formal, and, you know, I, personally, there's not, isn't, there are no real financial implications involved with this, except in the hiring and setting of salaries for, you know, one or two administrators. It doesn't have the financial implications, so why wouldn't it be equal for all four towns to, to make decisions? As opposed to the one, one person, one vote that you're talking about, Phil. I understand what your concerns are, but if we don't get it down on paper and have a discussion on it, how do we know if we're amending anything or not, or whether it's worth amending, so. I think we just need to get a subcommittee together and get this process started, we've been talking about it for going on 10 or 12 years now.
Greg's got a, Greg's got a question. Or Keith, I'm sorry.
Just a light aside, rather than amend, examine. We'll be amending it right away, we'll be examining. I'm still a little confused about what we'd be exactly looking at, and how it would affect the regional agreement, how it would affect Frontier, it's going to have implications on all the, rather than amend, examine.
We already have something for Frontier, right?
We're not talking.
We're not talking about Frontier, we're talking about the.
Frontier's regional agreement, we should have that some point too, but let's put that outside. A superintendent, see, union agreement.
Right, but anything that we talk about is going to have an impact on those other.
Right, because you need one central office, there's going to be stuff that is, that flows from both, both years. For one, to take language from current Frontiers kind of thing to, to help with that as well. It is the superintendent, the union superintendency agreement.
Correct.
Right?
If I'm right. Because this isn't a big dollar driver, I think if we were collectively, the school committees, to get behind something, I don't want to speak for any of the towns, but for some of them, I don't think it would be hard sell to the select board. That, you know, so I don't necessarily see that we have to involve, I understand you decided to have a vote in a town meeting, that makes sense. But I don't necessarily think that there are lots of select board members that change to get all of this.
I mean, if it's not a hard sell, then just do it. But, you know, we, the process, if there's a process now for frontier about how to amend or how to alter our working relationship, the idea of setting up a process for the other part of our relationship that is less than that, or affords the minority towns less protections than that, does it, is not desirable from my point of view, right?
Yeah, it's getting heavier stuff, right? We're not talking about any of that stuff right now. We're just setting up a committee and looking at this stuff and report back to this.
Right.
Are two lawyers on that committee too?
So.
Do we need a vote to do it, or do you want it to sound?
So, with the discussion items tonight, you know, you could look for people tonight, or you could, you know, this work could be next year's work. Perhaps fire this thing up and work it over some, you know, our deadline is probably to have it available, we really want to set a one-year deadline, depending on the amount of work we have been working through by March, so that we can, by March 1st, so we can get it on town meeting agendas, we have to go back.
At the latest, yeah.
Maybe if we crazy finish the school year this year, I'm not looking to have a ton of these to do now in the school year, you know, back on, so if we want to, want to, you know, I don't know how this group would be comprised, again, I'm putting this, it's a big group, it's kind of a dumb sign, but you know.
What does it mean to just now let your committee, just school committee appoint somebody to be on the committee? And then if you think there are other individuals not on school committee who should be part of the committee, appoint them, and that's what could be.
I like that idea.
No rush on it, we can do it in our April meetings, we'll give you a.
Sure.
Deerfield will give you two names.
It's not the meeting, I mean, this is the meeting, it may be, yeah, it sounds good. Gives people time to think about it.
Okay. All right, thank you. The next item here is the adjournment of the frontier committee.
Need a motion to adjourn from frontier?
Salute. I have to say. Uh, okay, this is frontier.
Yep.
Damian? Damian?
Yes, yep, sorry.
That's a bad.
Now you can go home.
Yes. Keith?
Yes. I go back to my hotel room.
Judy, yes, Phil?
Yes.
Lynn?
And before anybody leaves, one of the things I want to emphasize is, when Donna sends out something that we need a quorum to find out, and you don't do it, try to, try to make her life a little easier by saying, yes, I can be there, or remotely, like something like this meeting is, because some people, you know, whether you look at your emails or not, but it really helps us a lot when you say, yes, I'm going to be there, or no, I can't be there. But communicate with Donna. You know, when she sends out something, yes, I'm going to be there, no, I'm not, simple. That way, she's not pulling your hair out, calling me five times today. That's all, sorry.
Thanks, Mom.
Frontier can leave.
Okay. And Judy, are you going to stick around with us?
Uh, you and Damian, yeah.
I was going to ask if you could do that and just continue to take notes for us. So, we're moving on to initially, and we will be taking a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And I want to note that we will be coming back out of executive session to conduct a formal vote on two agreements. So.
So moved.
If we can entertain my motion to enter executive session for certain, mass general law, chapter 30A, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Union Number 38 educators and educator support personnel. I would, we would need to have those motions made at each committee. I'll consider that a blanket motion. Noting that we would be inviting Judy, Darius, Shelley into the meeting with us, so.
And Scott Paul, Scott Paul.
And Scott Paul, sorry.
Okay, I'll start with Conway. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second? Conway School Committee, Elaine?
Yes.
Jared? Jared?
Jared's still with us?
Okay, uh, Phil? Deerfield, can I get a motion? Mary, can I get a second? Gary? Yes, yeah. Ken?
Yes.
Mary? Gary? Erica?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Someone can I get a motion? Uh, Greg?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Wheatley, can I get a motion? Uh, Maureen?
Yes.
Uh, Bob?
Yep.
And Beth?
Yes.
Great. Uh, 720? Give me a second to organize myself, just wait a hot minute. Yeah, I'm ready.
We got everyone.
She didn't give me any minutes. I'm just waiting on it, so, let's go. Uh, I do have one point of our discussion, Keith? Ken, sorry, Ken.
Ken.
Wrong one. If you could just ask the people at the remotes to confirm that they are alone in the room during executive session, that was one thing's not asked.
Okay, but I also, I don't know, there are a number of people out there that are attending that are not committee members.
What we're going to do, what we're going to do is we're going to create a breakout room, drop everybody, all the committee members.
Ooh, this is really impressive. But they can.
That's when I have the pressure fall.
So, the people, yes, but the people.
Oh, if you sit here, I need you to do something fancy.
Darius says you drop those people, and they can be told that if they wait, we'll be coming back to general session?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Yes, I've got to see.
Yeah.
I just got to check and make sure I'm in the room by myself, one sec. Yes, I'm fine. Are we still recording? Do we need to be?
Yeah, the recording will continue. What they've got to do is drop the. I still have one, two, three, four, five names appearing. Did he go?
I'd had a child at the foot of the bed, and I had to make sure she was gone.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. She hasn't answered her phone, I guess she fell asleep, no, she's gone, she's gone. Okay.
We still got four, Darius?
They're working on it.
Yeah, I got it.
Actually, just got a message about a, an invitation for another call.
Go to that. All right, so. All right, sorry about the confusion on that. Instead, I just sent.
It's okay.
Everybody's at home, I sent you the executive session link, we're going to make the executive session link up here.
Okay.
Okay, so this.
Do it.
Go to your email, and you can be coming back to this, to this one afterwards, the vote.
Right. So, we, we have business, two votes, one is to approve the settlement agreements with Conway, Deerfield, Sunderland, and Wheatley School District School Committees and Union Number 38 Educators Association for the 2022, 2025 contract years, and authorize the chairs of the school committees to sign contracts.
We're going to start with Deerfield. Can I get a motion? Uh, Ken?
Yes.
Mary? Carrie? Erica?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Someone's next? Uh, Greg? Jessica? Peter?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Wheatley is next. Motion?
So moved.
Uh, Maureen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Did Jared join?
Jared's on his way.
Okay. Do we want to go on to the IAs?
Sure, why don't we do the IAs? That would be to approve the settlement agreements between the Conway, Deerfield, Sunderland, and Wheatley School District School Committees and the Union 38 Educator Support Personnel for the 2022 through 2025 contract years, and to authorize the chairs of the school committees to sign contracts.
I get a motion, Deerfield? So moved, Eric?
Second.
Okay, Dave, Ken?
Yes.
Mary? Carrie?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Someone's next?
Second.
Uh, Greg?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Wheatley?
So moved.
Maureen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Beth? Jared here yet?
I don't see him on here yet.
I don't see him yet either. Come on, Jared. Do we want to give it one more minute, or?
Yes.
What's that?
He said he's trying to get out, I don't know what that looks like in Conway.
Is he getting on the wrong invite?
Starting to engine up.
Do the Gilligan's bicycle thing, pedal.
Is he getting on the right invite?
You guys can always vote on the next meeting.
Put it on speakerphone and have to do it right now.
We could.
Do that.
So, I can put you on speakerphone and vote.
There he is. Welcome back, Jared.
All right, I'll make a motion for Conway for the teacher's contract.
Uh, Elaine?
Yes.
Jared? I know he's going to say yes, Phil.
Second.
I'll make a motion for the IA contract.
I got a motion from Elaine.
Second that.
Thank you. Uh, Elaine?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent.
Excellent. So.
I'll make a motion for Jared.
Second.
Raise your hands.
Good night, everybody on the TV.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Take care.